Let us pray. Dear gracious and heavenly Father Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to gather together. As this board gathers, Lord, give us strength and wisdom and guidance as we make very important decisions that affect everyone here and just help us do what is best for students, staff, educators, and just everyone. Again, be with the communities and the students and staff daily as they try their hardest to make a very loving and impactful day for students. Just go with them, be with them, Lord, give them strength. In your name I pray. Amen.
(inaudible) 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 Officially, we've called the meeting to order and now I need an approval of the agenda.
A motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Knight. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. That puts us on to good news. Dr. Rice, what do we have?
And we'll ask Dr. Taylor to come for our Employee of the Month recognition.
Good evening, Board members and guests. It is my pleasure to announce Ms. Rickley, excuse me, Ricky LaFave has been selected as the Stokes County Schools' Employee of the Month for the month of October 2025. Ms. LaFave currently serves as the Guidance Counselor for Germanton Elementary School and Pinnacle Elementary School. Ms. LaFave has been a member of the Stokes County Schools' family since 2015. I would like to share a few comments that were shared as a part of the nomination process. I could say so many great things about Ricky. She never stops working. One of the most important is that she is dedicated to the students she works with on a daily basis. Students feel safe with her and they respect her. The rapport that she has with her students is second to none. We are very grateful to Ms. LaFave for her commitment to the students of Stokes County Schools. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Ricky, Ricky LaFave, excuse me, the Stokes County Schools' Employee of the Month.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job. Great job.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
(inaudible) 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 Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job. Great job.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you. (inaudible)
(inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible)
Thank you.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
I'm sure they wore their split school shirts. One for Germanton, one for Pinnacle. (inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible)
Good job.
Thank you.
(applause) (inaudible) 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 Does that conclude the good news?
That concludes it. Yes, sir.
All right. Next on the agenda is public comments. The agenda for each regular monthly meeting will include a time period for citizens to address the Board of Education through public comment. Prior to each meeting, a form will be available to any individual or group to indicate a desire to address the Board of Education and a topic to be addressed. A three-minute time limit will apply to each speaker. Groups will select one spokesperson to address the Board of Education on the group's behalf, except when deemed necessary. The Board of Education, due to an emergency or other extingent circumstances, information received during public comments will not be acted upon at the time it is received. An official response on behalf of the Board of Education requires the approval of the majority of the Board and will be issued by the Board Chair or his or her designate. Any response by an individual member of the Board shall be not, shall not be deemed an official response of the Board. Grievances, complaints, or concerns related to individual school personnel or students will not be heard at this time or at this forum. Other channels have been established for the consideration and disposition of a grievance, complaint, or concern that involves the school personnel or students. The superintendent will discuss with and make available to any individual or group the policies and procedures for this purpose. Ms. Pender, I believe we have one speaker. Now, we ask you to please clearly state your name.
(inaudible)
Is your microphone on?
I am Deborah Henley.
Ms. Henley, is your microphone on?
(inaudible)
Yes. She was my...
Usually, I'm pretty loud, so that's why I didn't even know if I needed one. Good evening, everyone. Most of you know me, but some of you may not. I am Deborah Henley, semi-retired from Stokes County Schools. I proudly represent Stokes County Schools as Teacher of the Year many years ago, and I continue to represent Stokes County Schools with love and pride each day. My question for you tonight is, what do you know about 1975? End of the Vietnam War? Saturday Night Live premiered. The price of gas was 53 cents. Jaws was the top grossing movie. Let me help you out, since I know some of you here were born while others were not. Dr. Jones, your mom was entering ninth grade, and I know she remembers it well. Green and gold, go Warriors! Now, you may have guessed it, Southeastern Stokes was opened. What a year it was, as teachers put together their own furniture and prepared for a new beginning. Since 1975, many great things have happened at Southeastern, from having a state model PE program, which I was in, to record-breaking athletic teams, to New York field trips. Yes, Mr. Rogers, we had a great time with your family on that trip. On November the 15th, we would like to invite everyone to join us to celebrate the great things that have happened at Southeastern in the last 50 years. The negative often makes the news, but we want to celebrate the positive of the past and today. We're opening Southeastern to the community for an open house from 1:00 to 3:00. We've received community support from our restaurants, churches, as well as the town of Wantacote, to celebrate the faculty members from 1975 until present as well. There will be videos of the famous Southeastern gymnastics shows playing. We will also celebrate our current students, displaying their artwork, as well as their cooking, creative skills, and other talents. I want to personally invite you, on behalf of Southeastern Stokes, to join us for this wonderful event. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Henley. You said at 1:00?
1:00 to 3:00.
Okay. And I believe that concludes public comments. So moving on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda tonight is approval of the work session minutes for October 6, 2025, approval of Youth Haven Services Middle High Day Treatment Program, approval of Youth Haven Services Elementary Day Treatment Program, and approval of Youth Haven Services School-Based Mental Health Services. Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Motion to approve consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Superintendent's report. Dr. Rice, tell us all the great things happening in Stokes County.
Well, tonight, I want to highlight the Superintendent's Advisory Council from September. I have some, a little bit of data to kind of let you know how it's intended. I don't think I've done that in the past, but I told you at the previous meeting about the organization for the group, and so we had 10 of the 19 students show up for the meeting, 16 of 31 parents, 24 of 34 classified staff, and 31 of 34 certified staff. We covered a variety of topics that are on the next couple of pages. Tried to kind of categorize those by categories, if you will. We talked about bus misbehavior and discussed a handbook and number of offenses for different punishments for that. The question was about, one of the questions was about discipline and reports to law enforcement and how that works with students and their ages and all of that for criminal offenses. Sportsmanship for athletic events. There was some concerns about some of the games that people have gone to and the crowd or people on the playing field, and so we discussed that. They asked for a cellphone policy update. We know we had started off this year with the state looking at that and talked with our principals since then and provided feedback to them that that has been going very well. One of the parents in the Parent Advisory Committee said that she sometimes subs and talked about how that there was a student in one of her classes where, that had a cellphone out, and when she said, "You need to put it up," the other kids quickly chimed in, "You know that's against the law now," and said, so it was really being embraced and followed through. And then we discussed the new attendance policy that we discussed a few meetings ago about that and the implication of that. One of the students asked if we could have an alternate advisory council schedule, but due to sports, it's hard to find a time that everybody's available, but we talked about possibly having two different advisory council meetings for students to split up that time a little bit. Some of the staff concerns had to do with the required workday that we had last Wednesday, that we had a two-hour training, I believe it was, for one of our new systems, but they talked about the need of also needing to do grades at the end of the grading period, have conferences with parents, and again, it's one of those things, there's just never enough time. And, you know, I'm old enough to remember, it's probably been close to 20 years ago now, the General Assembly at one point, instead of giving staff and teachers raises, they took away five workdays. They said, "Well, just work less, we don't pay you more," but that didn't change the workload that comes through. So we're still dealing with the lack of workdays in our calendar. One thing that I thought was a very good idea, and we briefly talked about it, but we will be addressing it more moving forward, to potentially come up with a proposal, is they were asking if coaches, if there was additional pay that could be for coaches who drive their teams' buses. Getting a CDL is getting harder and harder in the state of North Carolina. Back when I got mine 25, 26 years ago, there was not a physical attached to it. The link that you could get a license was a lot longer, but now, where a normal person, I think, can have up to eight years maybe to renew their license, a CDL has to be done every three, a physical has to be done every two, and there's just a lot of extra steps that go into it. And because of the added responsibility and hoops that went through, they asked if we could look at our coaching salary schedule and whether it's increase a percentage for people with their CDLs or an extra supplement that goes for driving, but we will certainly look at that. Question was asked about duty-free lunches and the requirements that go with that with school improvement teams' approvals, so we discussed that. Bus emergencies was brought up. If there is a discipline or medical emergency, we have new radios this year for our buses, but they were asked about, without having to tell details on the radio, is there potential of getting code words or something to let it administrator know that there's some issues there? So we discussed that briefly and we'll discuss that more moving forward. Leave for staff. Question was asked about what all leave or available for staff for different events, like if a teacher has their own personal child, has an IEP meeting or different things, how to use appropriate leave for that. Questions about technology came up about student passwords in K-2. As you can probably imagine, when you're learning your letters and numbers, entering a password might not be the easiest thing on a Chromebook, but, you know, so we've tried to look at ways to do that better, potentially with QR codes or different things, and also how to consolidate the number of passwords that we use so that you're not having to use one for every application, and we think that going through Canvas will help limit that and make it easier for our younger students. One of the students brought up that they were having internet issues at the Early College, and they were. The Early College, Forsyth Tech handles the internet for the Early College, but we got our techs out there to try to problem solve and help speed up that issue. And then the last one was about blacklisted websites. We, especially specifically websites for other countries, because when we have our foreign language classes, we're, they ask us to use authentic sources, but if you just go to Spain, a website from Spain, those from other countries can be approved, can be opened up to use, but we have to make sure they're safe first and all of that, and so we talked about the process for that as well. So those were the main topics that we talked about. It was a very good meeting. Most of them were between 30 minutes and an hour each, so between two and four hours of meeting and a lot of good topics came up. It seems like we'll have a good group to work with this year. Any questions?
No questions. Ms. Knight?
As far as, you make quarterly, is that right with these, or?
We usually make three or four times a year. Now that we're doing online virtual meetings, we've been doing more four a year.
Yeah. I think it's great. I mean, you hear right from the source on some potential, you know, wins that we could get, so, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. All right. That brings us into discussion. Discussion day is this discussion of five-year data trend school profiles and improvement plans, and we'll start with Mount Olive Elementary School.
So tonight, we're going to continue with our school presentations tonight for our improvement plans, and the first 23 slides that were located in your packet are the same slides from the previous data that we looked at at the last board meeting. We just wanted to include that in case you want to reference any of that information for tonight, and we're going to go directly into our school individual plans tonight, so we're going to start with Mount Olive Elementary School.
Thank you, Ms. Kane, and good evening, Board, everyone. I think I know most of you in here, but for those who may not know me, my name's Matt Richardson, and I'm the principal at Mount Olive Elementary in King. And the first, like Ms. Kane said, the first couple of slides are information that was reviewed at the last meeting, dealing with school report card grades and academic growth. So we'll move right into our first, our first school improvement plan goal for this year. There's a lot of information on these three slides, so I'm going to try to hit the high spots, and if you guys have any questions, once I get done, I'd be happy to try to answer any of those. The first goal that we have is just a yearly goal, and looking at our data at the end of last year, we looked at our M-Class, which is the early reading screener for kindergarten through third-grade students, and we, when we looked at the composite scores, the overall scores for Mount Olive in comparison to the district and the state, we noticed that we were below the district and the state in oral reading fluency. So we felt like that was an area that we needed to target. We had some rich discussions with district personnel, with early literacy specialists, with our sit team and with teachers, and we felt like we've got a good plan in place and some good strategies and instructional components to integrate within our lessons around the building to make sure we're addressing the need to increase our oral reading fluency. We've got a link there that has some of those strategies on there. We're also using DIBELS in grades four and five, which is new this year. We have licenses for grades four and five, and the students that may have struggled in up until fourth and fifth grade, they still need that instruction of the foundational skills before they can become fluent or before they can comprehend grade-level text. So we're still trying to make sure we're meeting the needs of those students as well. Moving to our next goal. This goal deals with teachers using assessment data and matching the instruction to support the individual student needs. One thing we're doing this year is implementing a Fun Plus Flex period with our kindergarten first and second grade classes, and basically what it is, it leverages all of our resources, the resource of time, the resource of human resources, personnel, locations in the building, instructional materials. We, you know, we have new curriculums and seemingly we're getting access to new things each year, which is great, but with that becomes an opportunity for staff to learn those materials and to figure out how best to implement those and with what students do you implement those with. So this period offers us a flexible time to use data from the Foundations Unit Tracker and also M-Class data to make sure that we are putting students in smaller groups with, it may be with a TA, it may be with a teacher, it may not be that child's teacher. It may be a TA that might not be in that classroom so often, but the staff that they're going to be working with have the materials and the training that they need to meet the needs of those students. And I put that little picture there at the bottom just to give you kind of a visual. These are two of our second-grade teachers that are meeting in small groups with students with particular needs, and so this is a continual reflection, continual collaboration, and in that brings a sense of ownership and collective efficacy within our staff of the mindset of this, this class is not my class. This grade level is my grade level, and I can have an impact on students outside of my classroom. I can offer advice to a colleague, I can help out a colleague if necessary, I can rely on a colleague to help me if I need help with something. So we're hopeful that that can challenge us to be comfortable with the change, because with change does come challenge, and all that sounds great, but putting all those pieces in line in a real building takes a lot of effort, and I have to commend our teachers and our instructional staff from the district and early feedback from students. We're seeing some growth out of those students already and some enjoyment from them in giving them this opportunity. We want to be comfortable with, we talk a lot about, we want to challenge our kids. Is the instruction rigorous enough? But are we comfortable being challenged as professionals, as teachers, as administrators? Sometimes it, not so much, but we want to make sure we're walking the walk, so to speak, and that we're taking on challenges so we can grow as well. The last goal deals with communication, and we are a class dojo district, and that came about kind of last year, and amidst all the change, I did not, we did not decide as a school that we were going to go school-wide with class dojo last year, but it was the plan all of last year, knowing that we were going to start that this year. So all of our teachers are utilizing class dojo as their primary means of communication. Our number-one expectation and what we feel is right is professional communication with class dojo and with telephone, with face-to-face meetings. We're the professionals and we conduct ourselves in a professional manner. And also, each teacher is going to send out a weekly message of some kind. It may be a flyer, it may be a story, as class dojo calls it. An example is right there. That's a nice newsletter put together by one of our fourth-grade teachers, but we have teachers all across the building that are putting together newsletters like this to help parents feel a part of their child's education and to know what's going on in the classroom. I'm happy to answer any questions.
No questions. I just, I love that you're trying to individualize. I mean, that's what they need. Every child doesn't learn the same. That's a great approach, and I think that Fun Flex thing for K through two, like, it sounds really good. I know mine are older now, but that would have been nice back when they were in those grades, like, to have that kind of time to just focus on certain trouble areas, so, great.
Ms. Knight?
Yes, I agree. The Fun Flex is an awesome concept. It'll help those that are struggling in a little personalized time. And also, some of the, you said there is further teacher professional development for the Fun Plus implementation.
Yes.
You know what I mean? As far as meeting amongst staff and analyzing and implementation.
Yep. So, like I said, it, doing this effectively requires consistent collaboration, and sometimes doing that in a 40-minute planning period every day where you have different meetings, IEP meetings and PLCs, it's just not possible. So we're setting aside larger blocks of planning period for our K-2 teachers to really have time to sit and breathe and reflect, look at the data, what's going well, what do we need to modify, and that way, we're making database decisions that are best for our students moving forward.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Roberts?
No real questions. One thing that kind of popped out to me was, I like the culture. It seems like it's your implementing where it's not just my classroom, but it's our grade, it's our school, and where they're all pulling together trying to better educate the students. I like that. I like the culture of it. So, good-looking plan, you're doing a great job at Mount Olive, let's keep it up.
Thank you.
Mr. Black?
Yeah, I would echo that as well. I like the, where you're, you know, you're kind of accountable for the whole grade level, and, you know, one teacher may see something that another is not in a child, and it goes back to that individualism, you know, great work, and you can certainly tell by the scores. And that key piece there with class dojo or any method is to get the parents involved, that communication especially, so, great work.
Thank you.
Great job. Thanks for all you're doing.
All right. Thank you.
Board, up next, we have Pine Grove Middle School.
Good evening, Board. Adam Smith, I'm the principal at Pine Grove. Always love an opportunity to get up here and brag about our school. A few years ago, as you can see, we were low-performing, and since then, we've exceeded growth two years in a row, which has never been done in the history of Stokes County Schools from a middle school, so we're very proud of that. And right now, our school performance grade is at an all-time high, and it is taking everybody in that building. Everybody who does anything at Pine Grove is important, and we let them know it, and we work together as a team, and that's why we're where we are. So at Pine Grove, we're going to continue to use data-driven instruction. That's kind of where we're at. We use the EOGs, we use our walkthroughs, our observations, our iXL data, our MTSS data, and we have conversations during PLCs with our teachers about where kids are and what things are looking like and how to better serve them. Also, we'll continue to use our Flex period for MTSS. Our teachers are taking our kids 30 minutes a day during a portion of their planning to meet with kids, not just for academics, but sometimes our counselor will be in there that we want to meet their needs socially, emotionally as well, so we've done a great job of that, and it's for all tiers, not just tier three or two. We're meeting kids in tier one. Maybe a kid was out for a while and they need to take time out of their elective and come to our, to our MTSS meeting. We're meeting the kids' needs there. So we're very proud of the stuff we've been doing at Pine Grove. As far as what we'll keep doing, we're school-wide PD, me and Mr. Harbor lead, we're also getting Amy now with ERG to come in and focus on student engagement and checking for understanding. I think that's part of our school-wide goal, to really focus on that as a whole. So we'll continue to meet their needs as a school, and we do encourage them to use PTech to, for individualized PD for them. Our last thing is communication. Like Mr. Richardson said, we send out a call home. I do the Panther Post, which is a running doc that every staff member has a part of, so they're going to see what's going on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, upcoming events, so there's never a question of what's going on in our building. I've given staff members... I've given staff members the ability to take control of that too, so if there's something that they need to add. So there's never a question of what goes on at Pine Grove because it's always on our Panther Post. I'll send that out on Friday, and every teacher looks at it, and I'll say, hey, over the weekend, if there's something that's not on there that other staff members need to know, add it. So we are communicated well at Pine Grove. Last thing, last year, we are, like I said, we exceeded growth two years in a row, and last year, our growth kind of dipped, but we did have some teachers teaching new subjects, and we did have a teacher retire in the middle of the year. And teachers have the number one effect size on students. It doesn't matter what you do, what you buy, books, computer, it's nothing. It's teachers, you need people in your building, and that affects the kids. And so that, our growth took a little bit of a hit, but after exceeding two years in a row, that's difficult. But again, we're very proud that our school performance grade is where it's at, it's at an all-time high. Just couldn't be more blessed to be working with the group of people I work with at Pine Grove. Any questions?
No questions. All of them are great with communicating with students. I think they keep everybody in the loop, and I think that, obviously along with academics, that's super important, but also throwing some fun in there too, which y'all do a good job of that, keeping it interesting.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Any other questions? I've got two parents here, so they'll know.
There you go. Yes. Lots of good communication.
Yep.
Thank you. No real questions. It seems, you know, like a great plan for moving forward, and I just appreciate everything you do.
Well, thank you. Thank you, guys.
Ms. Robertson?
No questions. I just think you're doing a great job, and I know, I know from your history, you're very competitive and you want to do a good job, and it's showing. And just keep it up. I think that's, Pine Grove is excelling and doing a great job.
Thank you.
Good job.
We're working hard.
Mr. Doherty?
Yeah. The numbers and the data is certainly showing the hard work is paying off. I do got one question about the Panther Post. Just help me understand that a little bit. You're talking about the teachers.
It's all staff. So what I'll do is there is a running template that I'll take on Friday, and for example, let's say we have a staff meeting, or we have a sit-team meeting, or we're playing volleyball, and then I'll put, who's got gate duty? Who's got concessions? Then Friday, Monday, the whole, the whole week is, this is what we're doing. And then I'll have upcoming events, we'll have a prayer list, I'll send out shout-outs for thank you for people who do special things. So it's been a real, a real positive there at Pine Grove.
I like that. I mean.
I got one of my teachers here, he can talk to that. Yeah.
I mean, communication is key. I mean, you know, it's, for sure, so, thank you. Appreciate that.
Just a couple of questions. You sit over there, and he sit over there.
I, he came in a later than me.
I mean, he can't get away, or, I mean?
Yeah.
Okay. I can definitely tell there's a hot stain at the school because he's, and it's, hopefully it's infectious because he's definitely upbeat and it's.
Oh, yeah. We try to have.
From the growth, yeah, you can't exceed growth, growth every year, but the main thing is, from what I saw, it was still growth.
Oh, yeah.
It's when you, it's in the negative column, that's when we start really paying attention.
Again, it was, it was, we were upset that we didn't exceed growth again. We wanted three in a row, but again, our performance grade's high, our proficiency's up, so we're very pleased of the direction we're going there.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
Thank y'all.
Board, up next we have Popper Springs Elementary School.
Good evening, Board. Jeff Bowles, principal of Popper Springs Elementary. Thank you for having us here tonight to discuss our trend data. Popper Springs, we've had an upward tick in our, our performance grade, and our, our growth has stayed constant over the past few years. We have taken a focus on foundations and the foundational skills in our kindergarten through second grade, grade levels, and focusing on foundations and unit tests with a scores of 80% or more, or we're going back and reteaching and retesting those students. If they are not proficient on, say, unit one, they can't proceed to unit two and three and four and going up. So we work hard to reteach and retest those students who are not proficient in those particular units to, so that they can succeed as they move forward in the grade levels. We're also maximizing our instructional time with our TAs and our tutors, focusing on decodable texts and structuring our instructional time so that we can utilize the instructional staff that we have to give those students the small group instruction that they need on reteaching the foundations and also the decodable texts so they can be successful in those foundational skills, so they have that in the K-2 levels, so when they get to the upper grades, they can be proficient in on the standards. In 3-5, in math and reading, we have taken a focus on pre-test to post-test and making sure that they have that growth from pre-test to post-test. And again, also, if they don't have that, that proficiency, that we're going back and reteaching and retesting in those particular standards in math, reading, science, social studies, what have you. We've also taken a focus on implementation of iXL, as it's new to our district this year, and focusing on the student path based on the diagnostics that the students score when they take those particular diagnostics in the beginning of the year, middle of the year, end of the year, as you see. We also take a, when we have PDP discussions with our teachers, we've got very pointed conversations and very honest and open conversations about how they can grow in their, in their teaching and focus on teacher growth and student improvement. All right? So with Reveal Math in its second year, we've worked hard to utilize and implement K-5 Reveal Math and focusing on that pacing and the clusters with 3-5 to grow students to their full potential in math, and really focused on growing those students, like I talked about with pre-test to post-test. It's very, it's easier to do pre-test to post-test in the math than it is the reading, so that's where we're going back and focusing on the foundational skills with that. When I first came to Poplar, this is going on year three, we really took a focus on implementation of school-wide behavior, and we have done very well in getting that under control and talked about students' behavior and student expectations. We continue to focus on that because if you don't have behavior and check in the classrooms, students cannot teach the way they need to do and get through the things they need to do in the day. So we focused on Fun Fridays, having incentives for the students each week so that we reward good behavior. We also take that and reward them quarterly based on their behavior and incentivize them for having that good behavior in class. We've also taken a tiered approach to the three levels of the students in regards to teaching the whole student, academic, social, and emotional, and focusing on those three tiered levels and taking those students and meeting their needs where they are and intervening where is needed. And finally, we are on a good approach in trending upward, but we also want to focus on students where they are. So we're going to bring in Marty Erskine's focus on differentiation of instruction to meet all students with their learning styles, teach about learning styles, how to differentiate that instruction to students as they continue to grow throughout the standards. Any questions for Popper Springs?
No questions, but, I mean, you, y'all got it. It's a good, I mean, you're on it.
Thank you.
Because that's tough, like, every child, you know, your, some are.
It's hard.
Yeah, exactly. Like, some are here and some are up here, and, yeah, that's tough, so, it's a lot of attention. That's, that's a great, I mean.
Thank you.
Great track. Yep.
Ms. Doherty?
I like the PD focus and utilizing Mr. Erskine. Have you, you know, have other schools had good results or tried that as well, or have you talked with cohorts that have suggested that, or?
Kind of heavy inside track. Mr. Erskine actually worked for me when I was at Sandy Ridge.
Okay, okay, okay.
I know what he's capable of and what he can do, so I was really eager to reach out to him so he could bring that to my staff at Popper Springs as well.
Okay. I think that'd be something to, you know, keep an eye on, right?
He has worked with several schools.
Yes, I know. He's very, you know, highly regarded, yes. That's awesome. Well, thank you so much.
All right.
Ms. Robertson?
No real questions. I just think you're doing a great job, and, you know, with Popper Springs, our largest elementary school, there's a lot of moving parts.
Yes, sir.
A lot of, a lot of variance in student ability, and like Ms. Bennett said, you know, to be able to keep up with that and meet the needs of all those students is quite the task. So you're doing a great job. Just keep it up, and anything we can do to help, just let us know, and that goes for any of the, any of the ones here tonight. We're here to, we're here to help.
Thank you.
Mr. Doherty?
Yeah, I appreciate the work. You said you'd been there, what, three years? Is that right? I mean.
Going on year three, yes, sir.
And you can certainly see in, in the performance, an upward trend, and I appreciate that. The, one thing that stuck out to me was that school-wide behavior model, you know, part of making sure that that's, the expectations are there and it's clearly set, and I think that's, I think that's part of the success, in my opinion, so.
Yes, sir.
Great work.
Thank you.
It's always great to see high flyers in the, you know, all of our schools are high flyers. The three we've had so far are just, you know, that's the trends we like to see. All right. Thanks much.
Thank you.
Not that the next three won't be, okay?
Up next, we have Sandy Ridge Elementary School.
I want to talk about our growth for a minute. We went from, no, I'm sorry, let me put these on. We went from negative 1.84 growth year before last to 0.87 growth this past year, and I was very proud of that. Our staff worked very hard this past year to get students ready for their EOGs, and I was very excited to see the growth that they made. For our goals, efficiency and empowerment among staff, through that, we're using a team structure. We have five new staff members this year, and we have mentor-mentee meetings for each of those staff members every week during the first quarter, moving to every other week during the second quarter, and once a month during the third and fourth quarters to do a gradual release for those new staff members and make sure that they are up to date and ready and know what they need to do, and if they have any questions, they know who to come to for that. We also have leaders on our infinite campus leads as well as our curriculum and instruction, and our weekly grade-level PLCs. We have leaders in each of those, and it is wonderful to see our staff working together. We are also partnering with Dr., Mrs. Rice, sorry, Mrs. Rice and Mrs. Groover because we want to get our foundational skills with our foundations and integrity on point. So they have been coming and doing observations, working with our staff members as well. One thing that we noticed with our data last year, when we looked at our foundation skills, is we saw that the data looked really good. We were on point with the state or the district until we got to fluency and comprehension and vocabulary. So we knew those were the areas we wanted to focus on this year, and the piece that we felt needed strengthening was transfer to text. So we purchased decodable texts. The county also purchased some decodable texts. So we have lots of decodable texts that we can use with our students to help them to take those skills that they're learning in foundations and apply them in text, use them to create that fluency and to create those vocabulary opportunities for them. We also want to use improved human interactions. We also had trouble with behavior last year, and we knew that needed to be a focus, not only last year, but this year, moving into this year. And so we have set up some procedures and some reward systems as well to help students to make good choices, not only with student interactions, but adult-to-adult interactions. We wanted to make sure that those went smoothly and professionally, so we have professional setups for our meetings between parents and teachers, between teachers and other teachers. If there's a conflict, we have a procedure to take care of that, to make sure that it's handled professionally. Communication, several people have already mentioned Class Dojo. We were a Class Dojo school last year, and we continue to be so this year. We have increased our Title I parent events this year. We added an AIG night for our students who are, are identified as AIG. We want their parents to know that we are not just here to make sure that our low students are achieving, we want our high students to be achieving as well and growing. And we also are going to do a transition night at the end of the year to make sure all of our students are ready for the next grade level next year. In addition to that, going by our school handbook, we made some changes and additions to our school handbook, and we're using our, our new student handbook for the district, which is very well laid out, in all of our conversations with parents. We are also attending to students' emotional states, partnering with stepping stones who are coming into our school every week and meeting with students, meeting with families, as well as youth haven, as the new year rises, having students go there for day treatment. We are starting each day with positive morning routines. Every morning, students have a positive song that helps them to know that it's time to be heading to their classrooms, then a morning message that has a positive message. We're looking at different SEL topics during the morning announcements, and then every class has a morning meeting, which is a 10-minute way for the teacher to help students get started on the right foot. And then we are, of course, our teacher and staff evaluation. We want to make sure that every teacher feels supported, gets feedback, and understands ways to improve their craft. Any questions?
No questions. I love all the steps that you're taking.
Thank you.
All over everything. And I, I obviously still working on bringing in all the students from the consolidation, and that's still a running thing, you know?
Right.
Still effective. But, yeah, just, I think, everything, I mean, you're just setting them up to try to be successful, so.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Ms. Doherty?
What jumped out to me, which everything sounds great, your plan is very thorough, the new staff mentoring, I think that's huge, right?
Exactly.
I mean, I know the board's even had discussions, you know, just concerns about, you know, how well is new staff kind of guided and helped along, and I just think that's wonderful that there's regular meetings and further help and with instruction and things for those staff. And then you mentioned student engagement with Dr.
Yes, that's our PD focus.
How was that going, and what's an example, maybe, of something?
So Dr. Neal has come, she did one PD session with us already. Where she did a PD session talking about different ways to engage students throughout your lesson. When she comes back in January, she is going to go in and observe all of the classes, and then we're going to have, like, a feedback session at the end of the day where she can say, this is something that I saw, this is something I would recommend, just to help teachers to understand how they're using feedback, how they could use feedback, no, I'm sorry, not feedback, engagement better, just different helpful tips.
Okay. That's great. I hope that, that that goes well and, and really helps the educators. The other thing you mentioned is the grade level transition night to prepare for the next grade level.
Yes.
That's, that's really exciting.
You know, we have already been doing that with Pine Grove.
Right.
Getting our fifth graders ready to go to middle school. But we talked at our sit-team meeting about that we need to be doing that for every grade level, for every family to understand the expectations of the next grade level and to meet the teachers, to start to build those bonds with the teachers for the next year.
And I'll just say, thank you for all you do, and I appreciate all your communication.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Ms. Robertson?
I think when you look at the numbers from the growth from last year to this year, it's quite impressive.
Thank you.
And so that, I think that's proof within itself that what you're doing is working. Just keep up the good work.
It's a, I have a very talented staff. I'm, I'm very pleased to be at Sandy Ridge.
Right. Yeah, you have to have a good staff, not only you, but all of, everybody here, and it's not only in our schools, but even, even in our administration.
Absolutely.
We have to have good staff, and, and it's not something that one person can do by themselves. So I think, but you're, you're a good leader, and you're doing a good job, and the growth shows, and the same with everybody sitting here tonight. So keep it up, keep working hard, and just keep improving. Good job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Doherty?
Yeah, I would say, you've got five new teachers. Is that what I heard?
Five, yes.
Yeah. And so I do like how you're, you're implementing that training and that shadowing, that's, that's good. And that emotional piece of it, I find that's, I'm sure, certainly helpful in your, in your success there.
Yes.
I know consolidation was mentioned. How is that going since everything? I mean, we've been a year or so into it now, so. So we talked about Nancy Reynolds' last meeting. So I just wanted to see how it was from your perspective.
I think things are going very well. I think that the, not only the staff, but the student body as well has become more cohesive. And they just seem like one family now.
Very good. And what's that, and this may be my ignorance, SEL, what is that in the?
Social Emotional Learning.
Got it, okay. Very good, thank you, great work.
Absolutely.
My only question, I mean, and the numbers show that everybody's doing an outstanding job. How do you feel the reduction in the combination classes helped with that?
I do think that that is a big help. I think that it's easier for a teacher to plan and prepare for one grade level than it is to plan and prepare for two. Plus, you've got your time, you know, if you're having to split your time between teaching this grade level, these standards, and this grade level, these standards, it's hard to do as great of a job, obviously.
I mean, that was one of the byproducts of the consolidation we were hoping for.
Absolutely.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Up next, we have South Stokes High School.
Good evening, members of the board and fellow administrators. My name is Chris Bottoms and I'm the principal at South Stokes. First off, I want to talk to you about our trend data. As you could see, in 21-22, we did not meet growth and we're at a C as our school performance grade. We made some changes, reacted to those scores. And then, as you could see, for the next two years, we exceeded growth. We exceeded growth and also had a school report, school performance grade of a B. Last year, although we did have some. So last year, as you could see, although we did have some growth in our Math III scores and proficiency, as well as our biology scores, we had some dramatic drop in our Math I scores and a very slight drop in our English II scores. So this summer, the school improvement team and myself, we got together, we looked at the data and we brainstormed as to some of the possible problems for this. We came up with a set of goals that hopefully will help us right the ship and get back to where we were. Our first of the priorities and goals for 25-26, all of our students will grow to meet or exceed their annual growth targets and achievement growth and proficiency in the core areas of math, English, and biology. Our second one is our students will graduate within the four-year cohort possessing the necessary academic, technical, and employability skills for future success. Our third goal, all students with disabilities population will see an increase in proficiency as measured by the school achievement scores. And then our fourth one, our students will be productive members of our school community and be proud to be a SAR. And that fourth goal has to play into just having that SAR pride, being a part of South Stokes. And some of our students are underclassmen, our ninth and 10th graders, were lacking some confidence. I mean, some of them had never passed an AOG in middle school. And so we were trying to thank the school improvement team and myself of ways to building back that confidence because combating student apathy is a major concern. And so we felt like doing something like that would help reinstate that tradition of excellence that we have at South Stokes and build that SAR pride. So some of the strategies that we're putting in place this year to try to accomplish these goals. First off, our Math I students that were not proficient in the eighth grade EOG, they're going to be taking Foundations of Math I this fall and then they'll be in the Math I class next semester. So basically, they'll be having the year-long math in order to help reduce some of the deficits that they had in their eighth grade year on the EOG. We're also going to be working with our teachers to help them grow. One of the causes that our school improvement team kind of came up with had to do with the fact that over the past two years, our math department, which was a high-flying math department, has had, basically, the veteran teachers have retired. And so we're now trying to develop up our new math teachers. And an experienced teacher in the classroom is an incredible thing to have. And so what we're doing is we're trying to come together with our professional development plan to help them grow and help them as they experience these things. And one of the ways we're doing that is by creating the academic improvement team. And this team is made up of some of our most effective educators at South Stokes High School. It's chaired by Ms. Jaffe. And basically, they're helping to not only create a teacher framework of effective strategies, but also helping design our professional development. This past Wednesday, we had mini-learning labs in which teachers learn from each other in effective ways of basically teaching a 10-minute lesson to a group of teachers. And so they would provide feedback. And it was all based off of some of the key strategies this team has come up with. Our Math I faculty, not only will they be doing PD at math conferences, but they also are going to be doing a mentorship PD with Marty Erskine. As we've already heard tonight from one of the other schools, Mr. Erskine has done a phenomenal job in the math world as an educator altogether. And we are very thankful to Mr. Atkins and Dr. Rice and our district administrators for allowing us to partner with Mr. Erskine for the next two years in basically providing a mentorship program for our Math I teachers. That started last week. Mr. Erskine, after he was done, he complimented me on our teachers. He said that they are in the right spot mentally to accept what he's trying to teach. And our two Math I teachers this year, they are not brand-new teachers. They do have some experience under the belt. So they have the right positive growth mindset to accept some of the feedback he's willing to give. We're also doing professional development with our English II teachers. Dr. Amy Nail from ERG, she's been working with our two English II teachers, Ms. Voss and Ms. Holmes, and providing them with feedback. Even though, like I said, our English II scores, they dipped just a little bit. We want to be proactive and we're wanting to make sure that the cohort that came in from last year to its ninth grade and going into 10th, they are ready, or they're prepared and ready to achieve on that EOC. We are also implementing a flex period. Our SAR pride period is basically a time, 25-minute time, that we're doing two days a week in which students will be able to receive targeted interventions, remediation, and enrichment opportunities. We're doing it in the second and fourth quarters. We're using check-ins, IXL, in our benchmark testing in order to identify where the interventions and remediation is needed. And by doing this, we're emphasizing the importance of own-grade level instruction because they're still going to continue to have their class work during their regularly scheduled math and English classes. But they're also going to be getting, if they need it, off-grade level instruction during those remediation times. And then finally, to help us with the goal about the school community, we are implementing the SAR tribal challenge. This is something that's going to be incentivizing school spirit and student participation at some of our sporting events. This is something that I talked with Mr. Hurl at East Surrey. He implemented it there this year. And some members of our school improvement team had seen it and they thought it was a great idea. At one of their away volleyball matches, they had over 50 students of the student body go and be a part of that. So in high school, one of the best ways to build school spirit is to get students involved in being a part of the student section and going to not only sporting events, but any type of school event. And so with this program, we're hoping to incentivize that by having a leaderboard and students that attend, they get points and prizes throughout the months as this goes. So basically, it's a grade level competition. And it's our hope that by doing this, we'll build up some of that confidence and help students be ready to achieve on those assessments. Do you have any questions?
No questions. The Math I in the fall and spring semester?
Yes.
That, I didn't, still knew kind of to the board, but that used to be a thing. I didn't know that that had stopped or if it was just kind of student to student. But I think that's wonderful because I benefited from that many years ago, myself. I like that. And obviously, all the focusing on the faculty, like what you were talking about, the teacher to teacher, I like that. I think that's great. And the point system, big fan of that because obviously, you want them to focus on school and that's great too. But to try to encourage them to go out and do things like that, support their school and they represent South Stokes or represent Stokes County, I think that's wonderful. Support their other, you know, athletes.
Thank you very much. The Math I change that we've made, that's, we traditionally have had one, like Foundations of Math I class that would do that. And then last year, in just our communications with the Southeastern administration, we went ahead and had two of them. But we feel like this year, we're, I mean, just because the numbers are so high, we've got five sections.
Yeah, I think that's great. Thank you.
Ms. Knight?
Sounds like you're, you know, on top of things and, you know, very proactive. And I love the building the confidence, you know, and engaging students to participate with their school spirit and everything. Also utilizing these different highly recommended professionals, you know, to help with the development there with the staff. And the flex period, anytime, you know, a student is lacking, just giving them that extra time to catch up or meet with their teachers and hopefully get them up to speed where they need to be. Anyway, just keep up the good work, thank you.
Thank you. The flex period was something that Ms. Nowlan, our assistant principal, had. She knows very well, at her previous school, Patrick County High School, they used the flex period and saw success in their eighth grade students that we're trying to get some academic improvement with. And Mr. Vernon and Ms. Clifton up at North Stokes, we've been working with them and trying to make sure that, you know, because they're implementing the same type of situation.
Gotcha, that's good, thank you.
Ms. Robert?
You know, when we look at the numbers, you know, there is a drop in the numbers. And are you, do you find, are you finding, hopefully, that as the students come over from Southeastern, they're more prepared? Or you see, or has it been, you know, we've had a change in leadership there too. And I know we did the same thing with Chestnut Grove going over to West Stokes and it seems like the kids were getting more prepared at middle school. Mr. Smith over here has done a great job at Piney Grove. And I think, and I think that helps the high school. And so I'm hoping that, you know, as Ms. Gallimore works her magic at Southeastern, that that's going to help you at South Stokes. And the kids maybe will come better prepared academically, better culture, and that makes your job actually a little bit easier. And not that you've got an easy job dealing with high school. But I do hope that we see, start seeing some of those numbers reverse a little bit and improve. And I do like some of the changes you're implementing here and not just sitting back and hoping that things get better. You're actually trying to take a positive approach and make it happen. The professional development, bringing the people in to work with the teachers. I think all those are good things. So we have confidence in you. We just want to see you keep improving and keep doing a good job. And I remember when I graduated from South, it's been, I don't know, 14, 15 years ago now when I graduated, but dog years. Something like, we were trying to think a while ago, I lost track. But it's somewhere close to that, I think. But it's still a great school, doing a good job, and we want to see it keep improving.
Anecdotally, and just talking with Ms. Snow, one of our Math I teachers this year, she was a co-teacher, an inclusion teacher in one of the math classes. She felt like the freshmen that we had this year seemed to have a better number sense. So, yeah, I think there is some improvement there.
Good job.
Thank you.
Ms. Duncan?
Yeah, I appreciate you recognizing from that math piece. And that just shows you the importance of teachers and losing those to retirement. And I'm glad that you saw that in doing this implementation, this foundations piece. And I think to echo what Mr. Robertson said, you know, what you're coming from, from Southeastern up, I'm sure that that should be in the right direction too, to help there. I love the SAR tribal challenge. I think that's going to be a great, not just for sports, but all school-wide events. I think that's going to be a great, because it is important. I think if you can get the students engaged and, you know, excited about school, they'll be there to where they can, you know, learn. So great work, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
You know me, I'm not going to sugarcoat anything, so I'm going to ask it. I've said we're not going to rely on this COVID crutch any longer. Do you think some of the math struggles we're seeing are students that came through COVID without the basic foundations that has held them back? Or, I mean, we know we've had issues at one of the middle schools with leadership changes and just different plays. We're just trying to get to the bottom of all of it. And I mean, one thing I will suggest next time, get with Dr. Rice, maybe, you know, buy him lunch or something because he put Mr. Vernon, first night up, he took credit for flex periods all by himself. And all the hard work you're doing, I mean, he's just riding that wave on out. So I've got to admire Mr. Vernon for taking credit because that's just, yeah. He's doing an awesome job also in echoing what you've done and bringing it forward, taking it to the next level. I'm just trying to find out what we can do to make it better.
Well, I think consistency is going to be important. One of the, and you know, of course, this is all subjective, is students having consistency in the classroom with the teacher. And that has an impact, especially when you have teachers that leave midway through you. And at the middle school level where they're teaching year-long courses, that has an impact as well. But, you know, Southeastern has been low performing for several years. And we were able to exceed growth for two of those years. So I mean, it is possible, we can do it. We can make the changes and we can make it happen. We're just having to work with our teachers in the math department. And, you know, we're doing data talks with them. We're working with them, like I said, with Mr. Erskine. We're trying to help them as they build that deficit when it comes to the experience in the classroom, as a math teacher.
Okay, well, before we're going any further, I'd be remiss because I said I would do this last time and I failed on the first five. And I'm not going to wait for Mr. Durham because he's the high flyer. You're still undefeated, so, you know, all of his teams are doing great. What can we do to help?
Well, I think, and I think Dr. Rice has already mentioned, one of the things that I've talked to him about is having some during-the-day tutoring. That's something that we've had for the past couple of years. And something else that South Stokes would benefit from is a part-time at-risk student facilitator. That's some, that was a role we had when we had the COVID money. And one of the years, we had our graduation rate over 90%. And I think that a lot of that was attributed to the good work of our at-risk facilitator. And so having our graduation rate down in the lower 80s this past year due to some students there in our EC program that graduated as well as some paperwork issues that when we got audited, we didn't realize was necessary, I think that would definitely help us out as well, a part-time one. That's what we've used in the past as well as tutors. But I think Dr. Rice sort of kind of talked to you guys about that.
Okay, what about my other elementary and middle school? What can we do? What keeps you up at night? I agree with that, yeah.
I think we all could agree we use more teachers as well.
That's the big check, that's the big check. We have the inability to write as we speak, but, you know. Other than finding a couple of million dollars in a budget that we can't find a couple of dollars in, what can we potentially? Well, we've got three elementaries and don't let the high school and middle schools take all the credit. Well, we've asked Dr. Rice to try to find us a model that would allow for us to draw upon some potential tutoring dollars. We can't put teachers full-time in a classroom because that's a short-term fix we can't afford. But a short-term fix we may be able to, hopefully, is tutoring.
And just an update on that, we're, we've got a couple of line items left. It's more than I've been talking that we're waiting to be released. But a lot of our budget lines have come through and we're evaluating that and hope to have some ideas for the November board meeting to potentially have an approved budget with some of those issues to be addressed.
Okay, and from your aspect, at-risk? Okay. And from your aspect, at-risk?
Yes, at-risk facilitator would be great. Student at-risk, at-risk facilitator. We've had one-
Say that three times.
We've had one for the past several years up to last year. And in the, if it comes from the same funding as the tutoring, that would be great. But someone that we could use 15 to 20 hours a week.
So you didn't, it wasn't a full-time at-risk just at South, or, or were they?
No, we, we didn't have a full-time one. We, at the time, we were using some of our tutoring money to help pay for that during the, the time when we had the COVID money. And so we had two tutors and an at-risk student facilitator.
But now, given your budget is much smaller, due to that reduction, it's not feasible. Yeah, yeah.
So we're talking about just somebody who can check in and make sure that the student has got the necessary needs or why they're missing school or those?
Exactly. Someone that, and our last one, Ms. Marshall, she offered an incentive program with gift cards, checking on attendance, working with students that are having obstacles in front of them, you know, whether that's family issues. I mean, kind of the work of a social worker and a counselor put together. And, and then meeting with me and the, and the rest of the counselors and trying to troubleshoot and problem solve, and how we can get that student across that stage.
So you have none functioning in that role as we speak?
No. We, we had a, all we had last year was a tutor.
Okay.
And then, one quick question. You may or may not know the answer to this. But losing staff mid-year, do you feel that's typically out-of-district move sometimes for staff? You know, that maybe seeks employment elsewhere? Or is it shifting within the county? Or do you guys really, you may not really know necessarily? You know what I'm saying? I've heard that come up more than once tonight, maybe three, three or four times about, you know, losing teachers mid-year.
In our experience at South, it's usually at the end of the year with retirements. Or we have retirements at the end of the first semester.
Okay, so not a huge-
Not so much within district.
Not so much within district.
As was, was said earlier, consistency in staffing is the number-one thing predictor for us of success. When we have, we, we've talked a lot in the last few years about new programs that we've received. There's training involved in that. And so we implement a training cycle, whether it's with letters at the elementary level, or MyView, or foundations. And so when we hire people, we start over with those. And so when the rest of the school is rolling, then you go back and you start that training over again. And so it, it's a continuous cycle. And then when you have, and, and, and life happens with people. There, there's retirements, which people earn. There's maternity leave that could be, you know, 12 weeks or through the end of the year. And we certainly don't begrudge anybody for that. But that has an effect on the classroom. There are some transfers within district, and there are some transfers out of district. Again, we have some staff that drive nearly an hour to work every day. When gas is $4 a gallon and somebody, something that opens up down the, the road from them, you know, it may be a same-paying job, but their, their, their personal life is, is going to be a lot different. And so we do a great job retaining staff. Again, we'll have a teacher working condition survey this spring, two years ago. Again, we were the fourth highest in the state. So we have a good product here. But staffing changes matter, and especially in some of our smaller schools, which, if you remember back when we did the long-range planning, most of our schools are considered small schools or micro schools. Well, when you have one teacher in a grade level, and you have a turnover, a maternity leave, an extended sickness, those type things, those things have an impact on grade levels. And, and so it, those are very important. We are, we are extremely blessed in Stokes County at how little turnover we do have, but we do feel it when it happens. And we've had some great teachers and some rock star teachers. And Dr. Bottoms mentioned the math department. We're reloading now. We, we, we've had some rock stars, and we're hiring some rock stars, and we're very excited about who we're getting. But, you know, experience takes time. And, and it, it may take a little bit to reload, but we're well on the way to doing that.
Would they want to come out of retirement semi? One quick question, because, I mean, you piqued my interest. When did your at-risk facilitator leave? What year? Was it, did you have it last year, and it was the year of fall?
No, no, it was the last year we had the, that we could budget the COVID money. So we did not have one last year. That was the first year.
Okay.
Thank you very much for all your support.
Yeah, thank you.
Board, up next, we have Stokes Early College.
Again, she's sounding like the Academy Award goes to Stokes Early.
We had a little dip this year. But good evening, board members. Dave Durham, Principal of Stokes Early College High School. Appreciate you giving us, us the opportunity to share our school's successes and room for improvement this evening. I'll start off by highlighting some key achievements that we have made as a school over the past four years. The Early College has consistently maintained an A grade prior to 2025, and missed an A by a fraction of a point. Every kid matters. One kid would have made a difference. We had an 84.3 overall. 84.5 would have rounded it up for us. But we have maintained steady achievement scores ranging from 85% to 92.4% over the last four years. Growth performance has slowed from meeting high expected growth the past few years to just meeting expected growth this past year, although on the positive side. One thing that has changed was the significant amount of time for tutoring that we were able to afford this past year. So with, just like some of these others have said in last month, last meeting as well, with the ESR funds went away, our tutoring went away. We went from having to tutor three days a week to what I could afford last year was maybe one, sometimes two days a week. And I know some of my students came to speak with you about that last year. So that would be a huge support for us. Although math one and biology took a slip in 24, 25, our math three and English two proficiency both hit the 90% point. And as was mentioned at the last meeting, out of all of the success that we have had in math three, unfortunately, only nine student scores counted towards the school report card due to that algorithm that the state has put together for that. Like some of the others have said, we've had some teacher turnover in our math department over the last few years, which has contributed to that drop somewhat. This year, our math teachers have partnered with our Forsyth Tech math instructor, which actually was one of our former math teachers that decided to go teach for the college, to provide several tutoring opportunities among the three of them. Two days after school each week with our, with a high school teacher, each teacher does one afternoon, and then two days during school with the college instructor. She will provide tutoring as schedules will allow for our students. Teachers have also been pulling students on Fridays during their planning periods when students do not have college classes. Since they don't have college classes on Friday, they have that free period. So there, we could adjust the student schedule to where they can meet with that teacher during their planning period. Our career readiness shows an upward trend. Our ACT and work keys increased from 76.7% to 91.7% over the past three years. We did have a really strong graduating class last year, so I do expect a slight dip into the 80s this year. But our schedule, we're fortunate that our schedule allows for our English teacher to have juniors all year. They do English three in the fall, English four in the spring. And she incorporates a lot of ACT prep into her warmups at the beginning of each class. Data that is not shown on the school report card, but I wanted to share, since we are in early college, I wanted to share that we are proud that our college course passing rate with a C or above continues to trend upward, hitting a four-year high of 93% for this past year. We set the target grades of C, since that is what is transferable college credit to four-year universities. Our high school teachers do a good job, do a great job working with students to prepare them for the college classes that, that they will take. And if students buy into our program, they can earn there, and they will earn their high school diploma as we continue to have a high graduation rate. The Early College has had an increase in the number of graduates who have earned a college degree or trade certificate from 76% to 86% since I've been there over the last four years. And to continue with that, our school improvement team has set the following priorities and goals for our school. We want to continue to increase our student passing rate with a grade of C or above in all college courses taken, and continue to reduce the number of students who fail at least one college course. We contribute our success to that support that we've had with our part-time tutor position, in addition to weekly high school grade checks and bi-weekly college grade checks, along with continuous contacts with parents of students with grades below a C. We assign them to mandatory study hall and tutoring on Fridays when they have a free college period. But we've had to scale back our tutoring position quite a bit, like I mentioned earlier, with lack of tutoring funds. But we were able to supplement that with the little bit of money we got last year with some of the specific cooperative innovative high school funds that we receive that's not totally used for college courses. We also want to continue to increase the percentage of high school graduates that also earn a college degree, a trade certificate or diploma. We are proud that we have students who do earn degrees or diplomas that may never have earned one without our program. And we would like to see as many students as possible graduate high school with some sort of credential. Our counselor and college liaison continue to meet with students and families to discuss the many opportunities and options available to them through Forsyth Tech while in high school. We also want to maintain a healthy enrollment for our school through our recruitment activities while keeping in mind the state guidelines for cooperative and innovative high schools, the target groups, which include first-generation college students, students at risk of dropping out, and students who would benefit from accelerated academic instruction. With these target groups in mind, with these target groups, we have a wide range of ability groups. And with all of our high school classes being honors level, it could be a challenge for our teachers as some students in classes are students who would not necessarily take an honors class in a traditional school setting. But since the Early College opened in 2009, the target number of students at each grade level has been around 50. Our team has been discussing whether this goal is still reasonable. I've done some research, and in 2009, 10, Stokes County schools had around 7,000 students with around 560 students in eighth grade. So roughly 10% of that number would be around 50. Now Stokes County Schools has around 5,500 students with around 420 students in eighth grade. So we have a smaller pool of students to recruit from, so that's something we, we are taking into consideration. Lastly, we've been focusing, as a school, to define what our climate and traditions are. Since we receive students from all across the county, it is difficult to gain a lot of student participation outside of school hours. So in order to increase student participation in clubs and school-wide events, we offer club meeting opportunities during the school day for lunch meetings. Last year, we incorporated a house system that we call nests, similar to the Harry Potter series, similar to what's in those books, in order to create opportunities for student interaction across grade levels. So students are assigned to their nest group as ninth graders, and they will remain with those, with that group until graduation. We created friendly competitions where they can earn points for their nest. And at the end of the year, the, the top nest will be awarded the Falcon Cup. So this year, our school-level professional development is focused more on how to expand upon what we started last year, potentially added ways for students to earn points for their nest through academic performance and attendance, and potentially behavior as well. So those are our goals and our successes. I appreciate being back at the Early College. This is my sixth year there. It definitely is a great place to be. It's not for everyone. But contrary to popular belief, we don't take just the top students. We do have a wide variety, a wide range of abilities. And, and our teachers do a great job with that. So I'll accept any questions that you may have.
Ms. Bennett?
No questions. Obviously, numbers are good. Like you said, slight dip, but not, not terrible. The ACT increasing from 76 to 91 over three years, that's pretty good. That's really good.
That was a strong academic group, yeah.
Yeah. I like that you're pulling them, for you said the Friday, on Fridays, you pull them and do individual focus.
Yes. The math teachers are doing that, yes.
Yes, I like that. I think that's a great tool to use and-
Yeah, I, you know, they were offered after school, and I said, well, that's great. I appreciate you doing that. But what about the kids that can't come?
Right.
I said, we have the flexibility, in a lot of cases, to adjust their schedule on a Friday to where they can meet with them during their planning period, so.
Yeah, he's the best. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Ms. Knight?
It sounds like, you know, I know all the way around, it requires a lot of flexibility by all the staff at every school to really kind of focus on the same goal and work together. But thank you for what you guys are doing. I was impressed by the career readiness and the upward trends there with the ACT and work keys over the past three years. Is, I mean, is that just like, how, what would you attribute that to?
I would attribute to our schedule flexibility where-
Allowing these different-
Our teacher has those students all year. And she's incorporated mostly reading and English into her daily warmups practice. But then at some points throughout the, the year, she will incorporate some math and some science practice. I don't know where the ACT is going in the future, now that it's, the science, at least for now, science is staying into that. But, but science overall has become an optional test for those that not in North Carolina to take, sort of like the writing is optional where it used to be a required test.
Right. And then the increase in student participation with the clubs and the school-wide events. I know we've heard this common theme at, at other schools, and hopefully, I think that can be a very positive thing, just to build that, you know, one big team effort.
And we find, we have to try to do things during the day, because it's, I've ridden a lot of buses for my routes, and-
And they go here, there, and everywhere to sports, so.
And some ride two hours on a bus, one way.
Gotcha.
So that's how committed they are to our school, to ride, to be willing to get on the bus that long.
Well, I'm sure you guys will get out of this dip, but thank you for everything, and keep up the good work.
Ms. Robert?
No real questions, but I just want to commend you for the great job. And, and I think we, I think we, we lose track sometimes of how much of an advantage that is when they walk out of your place with a degree of college, and they can walk into a university as a junior. That's, that's amazing. And, and the, lifting that financial burden on the family. I've had a, a parent come to me and, over the years, you know, talking about the Early College and the importance of it. And, and her son had entered a High Point University as a junior. And she said the tuition at that time was, I think, $52,000 a year. And she said, you know, the Early College saved us $104,000. That's, that's hard, that's hard to argue with, right? And, and the, and the job that y'all do to prepare those kids and to get them, get them ready and to get that degree is just, is just amazing. And I, and I'm glad that we have students that can take advantage of that. And I dare say, and I know the other high schools at South, at West, and North, they can do the same. But I think you, you have students there that are able to achieve that at Early College. It may not be able to achieve that at some of the other schools, just because of the way you're set up and-
Right.
Individual attention and that you can give those students. So it's very valuable, I think, to Stokes County and to our students. And I think y'all do a great job, and, you know, just keep it up.
Thank you.
Ms. Duncan?
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate your, your leadership. Certainly commend you for the work you've done. I know in that one section there about the at-risk of dropping out and going back to, to South with, with an at-risk facilitator, have y'all ever had any of, any of that at-
We have not. What we, you know, with the lowering the number of credits for high school graduation has helped us, because we do have some students that we're pulling across just to get into high school diploma. And when it was- And when it was twenty-eight credits, you know, our electives are the college classes. So if you can't pass the college classes, there's no way you're going to. It's gonna be difficult for you to earn your high school diploma. So that has helped with reduced, helped us with those at-risk students who may not necessarily get a degree. But we could potentially focus them on a trades. Diploma or certificate because we offer the certificate on our campus. And next meeting, I believe we're still on the calendar, Dr. Wayne Mabe and I will be coming back to kind of give an overview of Forsyth Tech, Stokes County and the early college. Because I don't think anyone in this room worked for the school system or, except Miss Moore. Worked here when the early college began and when Forsyth Tech Stokes County campus opened. So we just wanted to kind of come and give an update to you and then get on the county commissioners meeting as well. Since it is a part-three-way partnership between Stokes County Schools, Stokes County and Forsyth Tech.
And kind of piggyback off of what Mr. Rogers asked, what keeps you up at night about early college that maybe we could help with?
Sub-bus drivers.
I was sitting there thinking the same thing. If they would just get some CDLs to drive some of those long routes, it'd be awesome.
We don't need to drive. We've got a singer that can drive.
You know, I don't have my license. When I became assistant principal, my principal said, it's up to you to get your license. But if you do, you're gonna be on the road all the time and I've witnessed it with other principals and. But I'm willing to ride with a driver who is like, I don't know that part of the county. Well, I'll ride with you to help you figure out those roads. That's why I know, I know a lot of the north area that I never did know before. But the tutoring, like I said, if we could get some more funding to help with that, that would be great. That's the biggest thing for me.
And I know we've heard tutoring multiple times. Is it specific to, you know, a subject? Or, I mean, how does that work with, with generalized? Because I mean, that's pretty big potential. I mean, from elementary, middle school up to high schools. I mean, what do we? Well, when you say tutor, does that make, you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah.
Because if you're looking at funding, it's what are you, what are we specifically looking for?
Well, I mean, if you can find someone that's strong in multiple subjects, that's great.
Yeah.
At a elementary school, you may could find that. I'm not sure what the other schools are, are thinking, but.
Okay. This is the stuff, I mean, you know, it's, I love the, you know, that we can have this, you know, communication and be able to hear, you know. And which I can, I think, speak for the whole board. I mean, you know, there's wishes or, or, you know, just, that mean we, everything gonna happen. But if we don't know about it, we can't, we can't help. And so I appreciate the, where we can just be candid and, and real with one another, so.
And I'm serious about the bus drivers.
I will say, one of our assistant principals, I think, really got out there and tried to advertise in a local parade, you know, with the signs on the, the windows saying bus drivers needed. So anytime, right, I guess, with Dr. Rice's permission, to get out there, you know, and more in front of the public or with the signs. I think there are some yellow signs around the county and just maybe getting a little more creative. We take suggestions.
It's more subs for me. I mean, I have the drivers, but it's more substitutes drivers, you know, when someone has to be out. You know, I spend a lot of my time, I had one out for three or four weeks on a medical. And a lot of time spent just piecemealing, this one can drive this morning, this one can drive this afternoon. Don't have anybody this morning, so do a phone call, get a ride. If you can't, let me know. We'll figure out how to get you here. So, yeah.
So recruiting drivers in your community, each school, right?
Well, and with some of our long EC routes, our early college, Stokes County Academy. While there are some people that's willing to drive some routes, those are extremely long routes that cover a majority of the county. And that, that becomes very difficult, especially for programs like the early college and Stokes County Academy. Again, it's one thing to get on and drive a thirty-minute route in an area where you're used to versus getting on and driving a two-hour route that maybe starts at four forty-five in the morning and then you're gonna drive till five, five-thirty at night as well. It's very difficult.
You just made it sound so appealing and everybody's gonna wanna, that's watching this on YouTube.
But you get your hours. You get hours.
You do get hours. You're gonna get some benefits on those routes.
Yeah.
Yeah, bloodshot eyes too. Thanks for everything you're doing. I'll sum it up by saying I have no doubt that you were sandbagging. Because you said, I don't think next year is gonna be this. Your trends show me that you're gonna find a way to make next year exceptional as usual and we appreciate all you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ford, that concludes our Stokes County improvement plans for tonight. Is there any follow-up questions that you may have?
I don't have any.
Thank you.
Cue the music.
Okay, that moves us on to the action agenda. First up is approval of personnel and coaching. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in paper seat involved by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried? Approval of Pine Hall resolution.
And the board, this is the resolution that we looked at last month and we just put it back to you this evening for any revisions and/or approvals.
Do we have any comments or revisions necessary upon review?
And I apologize for not being, you know, having to leave and not participate last meeting due to a pet emergency. But were there any edits previously or changes?
Fred made one edit. I can't remember what it was. It had.
But it was before last meeting, so this is the same document from last meeting.
Same document.
Okay, okay. And were there any concerns? I know it had maybe been mentioned before about like things or uses that wouldn't be favorable or maybe the board wouldn't want to see, you know, the facility become in particularly?
No, I think as, as you had stated, you know, it's kind of the county commissioners. We have to trust them, so. We have to allow on them. So with that being said, I'll take a motion to approve as presented.
So, one more question, sorry. So this would just go to them to kind of state, rather than maybe a phone call or an email or a conversation. I guess at some point it was decided to go the resolution route.
Well, they sent it to us with a proposal and we just sent it back saying, okay.
They sent an email where was there a resolution? Okay, okay. So we just kind of had decided to go the resolution route maybe. Okay.
At the advice of our attorney, yes ma'am.
Okay, okay. And again, that's just my not being.
So I think the only, the only change that we made was that any monies that's made on the property would come back to the board of education for capital outlay. I think that was the change.
That's the counterproposal for our board of education to their initial proposal.
And at some point, do we foresee a conversation even if between our chair and vice chair and their chair and vice chair or something? If this, you know what I mean, discussion continues further, would that?
I mean, if we had a stalemate, I'm sure we'll discuss it, but right now, I mean, it's just a, here's what we want. We said, okay, here's, that sounds good, but we just want whatever money you make to go back into the capital funds for use by the county. I mean, we're not trying to profit from it. We're just trying to get what's made towards the next purchase for the students of Stokes County.
I guess still my main concern is, I keep thinking back to how that Francisco school was disposed. And, you know, when you look at that and if you, and I've had, over the past couple of weeks, I've had people send me information about that. About that deal that the commissioners and, and there's, and there's one common thread from that school back to this school now that's still on the commissioners. And, and that commissioner's one that, that sent word to us that he wanted it for a dollar and no strings attached. And that's what concerns me. The way that school, the way Francisco was disposed of. There was no profits from it. There was a deal made that the school was sold at a very low price and, you know, apparently the, the buyer of the school had to make some, some improvements to the school. And I think the school was pretty much given to him at that. Then it was, it's been brought to my attention that there's actually been political donations from the, the purchaser of the Francisco school to a group and I'm wondering if maybe there was some benefits to one of our commissioners now. And I've got a, an email actually showing that. And that's what concerns me about this. You know, I think we all want the best for the community of Pine Hall. We want, we want the best possible outcome for the school. And do I think it will ever see a profit from the sale of that school? I don't really think we will. They can make the numbers work however they want to. But we don't want to see that, we don't want to see the school go and become a junkyard or we want it to become a, something that's gonna benefit the community. So I do like the resolution. I just have my doubts if, you know, if we'll ever see any, any profit come back from that. And I, and if it turns out to be something like the Francisco school and benefits passed back through different channels for that school, then I hope the community finds out and they'll raise, they'll raise questions about that. That's not something that, you know, that's not something that we'll have our hands in. But I'm hoping that, you know, maybe better ethics will prevail over the sale of this school than it was with that school. So I do have my concerns.
And I think that to, to your, your point, I think, just trying to pull up the, here it is. Tax value. I think the way we would prevent that is you would almost have to put in a resolution, a higher dollar amount. And basically say, you know, this is the purchase price and/or if it sells, which is higher. I think that, you know what I'm saying, it's more than a dollar. I mean, tax value is, let's see, tell you here.
I don't know if there's tax value on a public school.
Well, it was. It's not anymore. There was a total taxable value on it. But if you're just looking at the, the appraised building value is almost two million. I know there's work that's gonna have to be done, but I mean, would it make sense to have a percentage of that value as a sale price? Or if the county did sell it, you know, whichever one would be higher, that's how we would, would get. Does that, am I making sense? I think that way you're protecting, because what happens if a nonprofit that comes up out of the blue decides, we want it. And then it's just transferred and then there's no financial backing. And so, you know, we basically give a school away for a dollar. You see, and I, I get your, your concern. That's, I think that's the only way you prevent that is you have, we have to do something different than, than that dollar. I mean, if you're looking, I'm pretty sure there was a, a number total on the, on the GIS site. If you're looking at building value, it's over almost two million dollars. I'm not talking land and all that, but y'all have something?
Well, and I think, I think from what I've been told, the sales price on the Francisco school that the then county manager came up with, who is now a commissioner, I think the sales price for the Francisco school was forty-two thousand dollars. And then, and then if the purchaser met certain stipulations, then the, basically I think the school was gifted to him.
I guess I would be curious to maybe speak with the, isn't there not a group or a community group that now kind of oversees that facility or has a vote in it? What is it, North Communities of Northwest, Northwest Stokes or Northeast Stokes, I guess, Communities of Northeast Stokes?
I don't think that group is involved in the purchase of the school. Frank, you're talking about Francisco.
Yeah, so I mean, I would just be curious of, you know what I mean, is that, if they're representing the community, how has that panned out for them? Do you know what I mean? Are they happy? Have they seen improvements? Has there been businesses and things that's benefited the community, yes or no? You know, so it's a lot of variables there maybe.
And I think we've been on the, our agenda for three, four meetings now. And I know we've, we've asked, I know the, some of the citizens from Pine Hall community came to the board of commissioners meeting. And I've not seen any come to this meeting yet, which is kind of disheartening that my, if they're, you know, my understanding if they're gonna perform a it's an LLC or, or with the Northwest Community, it was a nonprofit basically. I think that was what maybe their thought was, but to hear, you know, I know that they, they had expressed concerns or, or ideas on what they wanted. But I know nobody's came here and I think that's one of my things about waiting and voting is to hear from them and nobody's here. So I would, I would prefer to wait just, just because my concern is, is more than a dollar. There's value in that, that land, that building that are we ever gonna see potential back from? And then I think too, you know, it's very, I mean, the third paragraph whereas it's gonna be used for the purpose that benefits the Pine Hall community and acceptable to its residents, I mean, that's, that's subjective. I mean, it's kind of hard to put in a resolution and it's gonna be and. So I just, I got, got heartburn a little bit about that third paragraph there. How do you quantify that?
Ms. Bennett, why don't you weigh in? I mean, and I'll say this real quickly. We've, this thing has circled for three meetings now. It's not like we are, this is the first time we've ever heard of it. I mean, we can pull it up right now, look at it on YouTube. We had the same discussion and everybody said, well, we're fine with this. We, we can't put any stipulations attached. The one thing I can tell you right now is Pine Hall is costing us money every month.
Um, we, we are budgeting around fifty-five thousand dollars a year for it right now, which is coming out of local funds that could be used for tutoring or other services for students at the disposition of it. But we will keep paying for it as long as we are the property owners. We will keep it in a usable, is that the right word? We're, we're gonna try to condition the air to keep it from falling apart, mold running through it. But we, luckily lawn care will be subsiding for the next few months, but it will get cranked up again before too long to either.
So Ms. Bennett, what say ye?
A lot. I, all due respect, I, I feel like Francisco is a completely different horse. That's my opinion. I was there when they shut that, well, I was there at the meeting leading up to their shutdown. Had family, had friends that were involved and all that. Horse of a different color, in my opinion. Exactly what he just said is what I was thinking the whole time. I understand that you want to get more profit out of it. I get that. That makes sense. But it's sitting here costing us money as is right now. So I guess that was my thought of resolve it, get it going. And even if you don't make a lot off of it, you're still gonna save some in the future, I guess, was my thought. And I feel for Pine Hall because it really, it's, it's hard to probably watch that school sit there. I get it. I totally get it. But, you know, something's gotta be done, so.
So the last meeting, we were fine with this resolution. This meeting, we're not. Am I missing something?
Well, I was taken away from it. So overall, I mean.
But you're asking these questions, you could have went to YouTube and seen.
Yeah, I could have.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I could have. Yeah, yeah. So my life's hectic like everyone else. I'm in the middle of harvest, and it's fine.
That's why you filed to run for office.
Yes, that is right. Sure, and I have this in front of me, and, you know, we can move forward, however.
Okay.
All right.
So does anybody want to make the motion, or do you want to table it again?
Do we want to consider what Mr. Duckin is saying, is increase our price from $1? And if they, if commissioners like it, fine. If they don't like it, then we bring it back and we put it up for sale. And at least we do have more control over it.
No, we can't really put it up for sale, right? I mean, it's.
I think that's what, I think that's the way it works, right?
I think looking at each other is kind of idiotic. Ms. Pender, what is the option?
You lack the community participation when the school system gets involved. You can't, you just have to auction it.
What are the options for selling it?
Right, so there is a statute that drives selling it, just one second. Okay, so disposition of school property, the easiest way to get rid of it is, would be to contract, like you were suggesting, with the county commissioners, like this resolution contemplated. Otherwise, you have to go through the hoops that are provided for disposal of real estate, and.
Ms. Pender, is your microphone on? Okay. Thank you.
All right, so if we go to your policy 9400, which is the sale, disposal lease of board-owned real property, there's special provisions for real property, and it must be conducted in accordance with statutory and constitutional requirements, where the superintendent can, can secure the services of consultants to conduct feasibility assessments, determine the fair market value of the property. No building or land can be sold below the, the fair market property or exchanged for less than full faith and consideration, except as permitted by law. One of those examples would be if you've worked with the county commissioners to determine a fair price between you and the county commissioners, and you can lease it, but otherwise, you're looking at having an estimate and then setting it for sale at that market value determined by the estimate.
But the fair market value, is that based on tax value, or how does that play in?
That, that's where you have a consultant to determine what that fair market value is.
An appraisal. So are we allowed to sell it to the commissioners for a dollar, or do we have to sell it to them at fair market value?
No, you can come to an agreement with the county commissioners. The statute allows for, there's a separate exception where if it's one government entity to another government entity, you do, as long as you can come upon a fair agreed-upon price between the two entities, you do not have to go through the fair market value process.
So the only way to know the fair market value is hire a consultant fee, or hire a consultant, pay the consultant fee to determine that?
I'm, I'm not sure how else you'd be able to determine the fair market value.
So for us to come up with a number, it just has to be an arbitrary number out of a hat?
I would not like you to come up with a number.
I said that kind of facetiously, but.
Yes.
Well, I think you'd have to have an appraisal on it, and, and to determine a fair market value is probably not gonna be the easiest thing, because there's no comparisons to compare it to other schools in this area that have sold, right?
Exactly. Particularly a property of this type. It depends on the age of the property, but I'm assuming that there's not a ton of buyers for this particular.
For a 75-year-old building with, you know.
Probably needs work.
So they may have to spend as much as is the value to get it up to par, to use it to house something or operate a business, so.
Well, that's exactly why we decided, or part of the reason, I think, we decided to consolidate. There was several reasons, but we looked at the prospects of putting a new roof on for $500,000 or $600,000, and, and the other work that needed to be done to the building, so I, I understand that. I mean, I, I'll admit, it's a, it's a tough situation for us as a board to decide that, and. I think my, I think my main, I think my main concern is, I want to see, I want to see the school system treated fairly. I think that's bottom line for me. I want to see the school system treated fairly. I don't want to see us put our faith that we're gonna turn it over to the commissioners, and I, and I've said this at the past meetings, that the commissioners really have more latitude in how they dispose of that building. They may have more economic development funds available, things that they can do that we can't do, right? They have more leeway to, to, to help dispose of that building. But I don't want to see it come down to the, the building's disposed of, and then everybody else has profited from it except for the school system. And it's, it's a, it's a building that's ever, how many years old? 70, 80, 60, 70, 80 years old, whatever it is, that the school system, and plenty of boards and people before us have maintained and spent money on and looked after, and then I'd hate for somebody to come in, you know, individuals or whoever it may be, and benefit from the sale of that building, and our students, and our, and our system is left out in the cold. I think that is my main concern, is I don't want to see us, you know, I don't want to see us get the shaft over the whole thing. And, and I can, you know, and I look back at the Francisco School, and I kind of feel like if that's what happened. There were people that benefited from that sale, and it was not the school system. And I don't want to see that happen again. And I'm just having a hard time putting my faith in, that that will, that that'll happen here. So I'll, I'll be at the mercy of the board. If the board decides this is a good deal, and that's what they want to do. But I, I do have my concerns, and like I said, I'm just, I'm concerned for, you know, because our students are really the ones that get hurt from the whole deal. I've said it before, I don't want somebody to steal their lunch money, and I can see that's what's happening.
And if you'd like, I'd be happy to consult with other education law attorneys in my office to see if anybody has any creative ideas, if you end up not moving forward on this.
I think the creative ideas would come from, from the Commissioner Board, because, like I said, they have the latitude to do, to make different economic deals or different, where we, all we can do is pretty much put it up for sale. We don't have, we don't have some of those resources available to us. It's up for us, it's just putting it up for sale, and the high bidder's gonna get it, good, bad, or indifferent for the community. That's kind of what happens. For me, it's just a trust factor, and it's not, it's not the entire Board of Commissioners. I don't want people to think that, but I do have my concerns. So, like I said, I'm at the mercy of the board. Whatever the board decides, first, it takes three votes to send it up the hill. We have three votes. Let's, let's motion and vote it and see where it goes.
Does anybody want to make a motion, or we're gonna table it again?
Is everyone allowed to speak and share their feelings? I mean, it sounds like we've all had questions, but, you know, my shit was jumped, because I had a comment.
Excuse me?
Everybody can speak.
We do not use profanity in this setting.
Well, I'm tired of being disrespected. I've had it up to here.
Nobody's disrespecting you. You disrespected the board by coming in here unprepared.
Me, I'm not unprepared. I had an emergency and was not able to have further discussion. Everybody else has had questions, and they were at the last meeting. Why give me a hard time?
Nobody gave you solely a hard time. You kept referring to the fact you weren't ready.
I didn't say I wasn't ready.
You said, "I didn't have, wasn't here. I don't know what happened at the last meeting."
After I was jumped on.
So either way, you're not gonna use profanity in a meeting I'm chair of.
All right. But I don't know how else to express that I'm just, I mean, I've been very nice.
You do it respectfully and professionally, just like everybody's tried to treat you.
Then that's how I should be treated.
And we were.
And I don't feel so, but that's a.
Okay, that's your, that, I did not use profanity.
Okay.
So with that, we'll table it till the next meeting. Moving on, information and announcements.
Just want to remind those that are listening and in attendance tonight, our work session on the 3rd of November will be held at 4 o'clock PM. And Board, if you'll please put December 11th on your calendar for the City and School's Breakfast. That's also in your packet. And that's all I had, besides your typical information. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded by?
Second.
All those in paper seat and by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.